All right, welcome one and all. If you're streaming at home, or if you want to call in, the number is up on the screen. Phone number 646-749-3122. Meeting number is 791-645-725. This is the Burlington City Council Meeting Number 12, June 15th, 5:30 in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh oh, we're hanging on for a second. Once Kathleen gets back to her seat, we'll do the roll call, please. Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Crayser?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
All right, full house. First up is Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda haven't been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight on the consent, we have the normal finances and miscellaneous minutes, previous minutes, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports and bonds, some resolutions. Resolution number one is approving final acceptance and final payment and release of retention monies for the 2019 Seal Code Street Resurfacing Project. Number two is a resolution approving the purchase of a permanent easement for 2021 Harrison Avenue Reconstruction Project. Number three is a resolution approving the professional service agreement of Klinger, Klinger, I always screw that up, and Associates to perform Phase 2 of Environmental Site Assessment. Number four is resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the Iowa Department of Transportation's Safe and Recreational Trails Application for Construction of the Flint River Trail located in the city of Burlington, Iowa. Number five, a resolution approving the Greater Burlington Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan for 2020 and set date for public hearings for July 6, 2020. First up, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 114 Harrison Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Number two is a consideration of ordinance amending Section 73.04 Special Speed Restrictions of Chapter 73 Speed Regulations of the Burlington Municipal Code. And two appointments, Housing Appeals Board, Dr. Sid Carter, and Low-Rent Housing Board, Robert Mastin. Robert, you have our prayers. He had a tough, tough time the last couple of weeks. Is there anyone online that would like to have something removed from the consent? No one online? Anyone from council? No? Can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
Okay, first up is a hearing statement for consideration of the sale of property, Lot 2 at the Parkview Subdivision, 707 Shakkacon Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland, please. And we're going to check the phone lines just in case someone's trying to dial in for the sale of this lot, which will make someone a lovely home. That's red. Still nobody online? Okay.
This is Lot 2 of Parkview Subdivision, located at 707 Shakkacon Drive. Previously, we have sold Lot 3 on the eastern end of this subdivision for the same amount as bid on this property from a separate developer that they have started construction on that. All the lots are the same size. They all have the same conditions as well. There are restrictive covenants that the City Council approved for the lot. House shall be commenced on the lot within 12 months and completed within 24 months of date of purchase. Attached two-car garage and concrete driveway, 1,200 square feet of living space on the main floor, and the purchaser shall maintain the property upon approval of sale. So they have to mow and maintain the property once purchased. Currently, we do have one bid from HP Enterprises in the amount of $25,000, represented by Bob Huppenbauer, who's built quite a few homes in Burlington recently. Staff has reviewed the property and sale with him and would recommend approval at that price.
Okay. And there's no one, there's no one online to bid against Mr. Huppenbauer? Council, you have any questions on the sale? All right. Let's close the hearing.
Try not to screw this up. Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen, when you're ready.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Moppen?
Yes.
Kathleen, now I roll into the amendment, right?
You do the resolution.
Resolution first.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property Lot 2, Parkview Subdivision, 707 Shakkacon Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Is there any, any additional discussion? Now you go ahead to your amendment.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as Lot 2, the Parkview Subdivision, 707 Shakkacon Drive, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to HP Enterprises at 515 Ferris Lane, Burlington, Iowa, for the amount of $25,000.
Any discussion? Second, okay. Can I get, can we go ahead and vote, please, on the amendment?
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Moppen?
Yes.
Now vote on it as amended?
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
Congratulations. Number two is a statement consideration for a permanent encroachment agreement with CMM Co., L.C., for an encroachment into the Market Street Right-Away adjacent to 107 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
This is the Frank Miller property there on the corner of Main Street and Market Street. It's addressed off of Valley. They own the entire block of property there. Previously did an addition to the east fronting Front Street, and this will mirror that same appearance with the windows up above, having some dockage on the south and south side of the property. They have received a building permit for this. The encroachment would be for the stair access on the south edge of the property on the western, southwestern portion of the property. Mirrors similar to what was previously approved by council for Phase 1. There's a stair access here next to the area that has a lot of their Transformers. There's a picture here that shows, so this will fill in this area here. They still have a couple docks here on the Main Street side, this being Market, so it'll fill in this area here, and then will be stair access similar to this coming into the right-of-way. We'll maintain in excess, I think, of 10 feet of right-of-way there. Projects out, I believe, eight feet, so still adequate right-of-way there adjacent to it.
Okay. Is anyone online? No. Council, any questions for? No? Can I get a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes. Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the permanent encroachment agreement with CMM Co., L.C., for encroachment into the Market Street Right-Away adjacent to 107 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
Okay, next up, statement is the consideration of a 2020 Amendment to the Burlington Urban Revitalization Plan.
This plan was previously amended for a similar situation when we brought the Apollo School Site in to the area. We've had a request from owner of the building next door, the former YWCA here on Fourth Street, in order to help facilitate their redevelopment of that building with Upper Story Residential, that could be brought into the downtown urban renewal area, which I guess urban revitalization area, which qualifies it for the tax payment that council had previously approved. So that, looking to kind of square off this Columbia Street between Fourth and Eighth Street, bringing that property in, so it'll qualify if they make improvements that meet our requirements for the extended tax payment program, which is 10 years, with the first seven years 100%, and then 75, 50, 25.
Okay. Is anyone online still? I'm going to keep checking. Council, you have any questions or concerns? Can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second. When you're ready.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Moppen?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the 2020 Amendment to the Burlington Urban Revitalization Plan.
Second.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
All right. Don't want to jinx us. Go ahead.
Do I have another motion there, sir?
Yeah.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance of many ordinances related to designating an area of Burlington, Iowa, that is the Burlington Urban Revitalization Plan.
Second.
Any thoughts or discussion? No? Kathleen, can we have a vote, please?
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
All right, next up are resolutions. Resolution awarding contract for the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project. Hi, Nick.
Good evening. In front of you is a resolution.
Second.
Sorry.
I just said hi, I didn't say go.
Oh, my bad. In front of you is a resolution that would award contract to MG Daily Construction in the amount of $110,620.79 for the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project. As you may remember, this project is mostly associated with some of the ADA compliance work associated around Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, along with a couple other various type things. We had three bidders on this project. The engineer's estimate was $102,000. Bid came in 110, so just slightly above what the estimate was. We're using our ADA Ramp Program funds, which is road use tax money that we allocate to do this. I see no reason to not recommend awarding contract to them.
Okay. Still no one online? All right, council, you have any questions for Nick on the project? All right, let's vote. Kathleen, please.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
Next resolution, please.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 ADA Ramp Improvement Project.
Need a second?
Second.
This resolution would award contract to Hickey Contracting in the amount of $263,521.91. This is the 2020 ADA Ramp Improvement. A majority of this work, as you may remember, is around the HMA work that we did up at the North Hill area. Typically, we bid this work out together, but because of the way the HMA project last year had been bid out, we kind of added to that. We designed it and bid it out as a separate project. The, we had three bidders, the same three bidders that bid on the 19 project. The estimate on this project was $285,000. We, the contract amount bid was 263, so it's a little bit less, makes up kind of the difference that we were off from the estimate on the previous award. This is funding source for this project. We had planned on using the GEO money, which is the R&R program that we talk about. We still have some monies available out of the same program money that we paid for, we're going to pay for the 19 project. So it'll probably be a combination of the both. Some of these, this funding is dependent upon where some of the larger road projects that haven't quite closed out yet, that are GEO funded, so a little bit more confusing on the funding source, but ultimately GEO is kind of the planned area for that. So I would recommend awarding contract.
All right. No one online? Council, you have any questions? Can we have a vote? Kathleen, please.
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Moppen?
Yes.
Next up.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 West Avenue and Gere Avenue Dowel Bar retrofit project.
Need a second?
Second.
The resolution here would award contract to Iowa Civil Contracting in the amount of $414,499.15 for the Dowel Bar retrofit project out on the west part of town. As I kind of spoke about in a couple of previous items with the plans and specs, and then the memorandum of understanding with West Burlington, this is a combination project that we, were the source that the bidding went out through. The, the estimate on the project was 507,000, so it was nice to see that come in quite a bit significantly lower. Our, or the City of Burlington's obligation is in the 302,000 range, and then the, the West Burlington portion will be about 112. So we are using the, the GEO money for this project, the R&R program, and so this project will, kind of as I've spoken about, go in and we'll saw cut and replace dowels bars and then diamond grind afterwards, so I think it's a, you know, good price on this project, a lot better than what we were kind of expecting. We didn't know how to price it, just, it was, it's a smaller project in the context of this type of work, so it's good to see our, the pricing is as low as, so I would recommend approval.
Okay. Is anybody online? No? Council, you have any questions?
Yeah, Nick, will this eliminate the hippity-skipity? The hippity-skipity, how do I say that?
I believe you were just asking me to repeat the word, but I will answer. Yes, it should eliminate some of the motion that you feel when you're, when you're driving through that roadway.
Nicely done.
You said motion.
All right.
Trying to eliminate the concocted words that I come up with.
That's fine.
I enjoyed it, actually.
Can we get a vote, please?
Breaker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Crayser?
Yes, please.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Moppen?
Yes.
Okay, next up, please.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Diamond Ridge Drive.
Second.
The resolution in front of you is part of a request from the developer off of the Diamond Ridge Drive area, which is previously called the Hugh Holt Subdivision or the Diamond Ridge Subdivision. The request for these lights is not typical compared to what you've seen in the past for streetlight requests. It's a little bit different, and so in my memo, I've kind of explained some of the background behind that. These lights or the posts and the lights were installed in the 2005 era. We in 2005 accepted through resolution by the City Council to accept the paving storms who were in sanitary, and then also the street lighting. These were not, these posts and lights were not in any of the preliminary or final plat drawings, nor were they any specific language that said that the City of Burlington accepted them. So moving forward from that, I had to ask Alliant how they would treat these lights and what would be the process. Should the City of Burlington be willing to accept these, what would, what would need to happen? So in there, you could see kind of a response that I got from Alliant Energy talking about the ownership of the lights, and if we, the city, were to take ownership of the pillars, they would then accept maintenance of the lights themselves for the $7 and $85 a month, and then they would maintain the lights. So the, the pillars are on private property, as you can kind of see with the overhead picture that I have up on the screen. So that brings a little bit of a conversation of accepting them. One of the things, should the City Council approve the, the maintenance of these lights, we would have to go get permanent easements of some sort for Alliant Energy to be able to access and properly maintain the lights, and for the City of Burlington to be able to maintain pillars should, you know, they fall apart at some point. In my recommendation, I did not recommend acceptance of these lights. Part of the rationale was these, these lights do not provide any value or minimal value for any sort of street lighting, the height of which they're lighting, and the distance back from the street. They don't provide very much benefit to the street lighting. Also, there is a, a street light directly across from that intersection, kind of near the school property, that should, that lights that intersection, I think, fairly sufficiently. The second thing is, is the, the pillars and the ownership of them, and I kind of explained this at the work session, but these pillars throughout town, the entrance pillars, have been something in different eras that we have accepted and maintained. I don't know at what point the City Council decided to no longer do, to accept them and maintain them, but prior to this era, we did. We do have some that we maintain, and I don't, moving forward, I don't recommend the maintenance of these types of structures, especially since they're not in public right-of-way. But they can be kind of expensive when they get run into. They are, they're further away than the ones that are on like a Bittersweet or Quail Ridge, but they are still prone to that type of work. So based on that, I didn't recommend accepting the pillars nor the lights. Now, should the City Council not award, there is probably some conversation that the developer and Alliant has to have on the maintenance of these lights. As you noticed during the evening time, one of them is out, and that, that's part of the conversation, is why this was spurred, so I can answer any questions on that. I know that was kind of a lengthy conversation.
The, one of, so we, since I've been on council, we've seen these kind of requests come up probably, what, five or six times, just where you accept what we've put into this subdivision, and, and the things that we look at are obviously location, how far it is away from the right-of-way, what value it brings to the neighborhood in terms of lighting, whether or not it's necessary to have them there, and then the maintenance associated with them. I understand that these won't necessarily meet all of the, or check all those boxes because of a number of things, but is there anything in your minds? I don't want to discourage people from wanting to brighten up their subdivision or their development. Is there a type of decorative lighting that checks all the boxes that we would want it to check?
We could put it as a standard.
That we could put as a standard. So, I mean, I'm sure that we're going to have future developments, whether it's next year or 20 years from now, and I'm sure people are going to want to do things like this. Is there something out there that, as a city, we could say, listen, we don't want that, but we would take this, and it needs to meet these requirements, and if it doesn't, then it won't work. Even, not only just entrance and decorative, but perhaps, you know, we've talked about Sunrise West that had something where it was too high, and it wasn't, there wasn't enough lumens, and, I mean, are there things out there that check those boxes?
So our biggest hurdle in the, in the process is that we rely on Alliant Energy to operate and maintain the lights. They, as the, the people that do that, only have a very limited supply or selection of which that they will install and maintain. And so I think that's probably our biggest, it's either the decorative colonial style that, you know, the tops of these lights, these pillars, that's kind of the style they are. The lenses are very opaque, you know, they're, you know, they're not LED light, not that I don't think LED would help this, those lights necessarily, but they have that style, and then they have the not, you know, aesthetic-looking Cobra Heads. That, those are our options that Alliant will do. Now, if the city wants to operate and maintain those, which I don't know that we would have the capacity to do, you could move into some other types of lighting. You could have, the standards alone is a conversation separately, but as far as an operation of the lights, I think that's some of our limiting factors, that we rely on Alliant to operate and maintain the lights. And with that limited selection, and I can understand why developer wants them to look nice, however, when you're actually talking about what it looks like at night, the, the nice-looking lights have gotten better in what they cover for lightage, but the, the ones that are currently up in town, they do not provide very much value to street lighting. So it's kind of a two-part conversation. I think we should probably determine some of that, however, it has ramifications on what Alliant has, and I don't know if we can talk to Alliant about what they have for selection. You know, it's.
No offense. I, I, well, I can give you the number, because I've had a call with, through with Tracy McCambe. I, I think we ought to sit down with Alliant and find out, so we're not deciding this with every development, and future councils don't have to. So I would, I would be interested, at least, Nick, in, in doing this, because it does seem like we're, we're constantly up against this, this argument as far as what type of lights. I have no problems with the city and Alliant working together to set a standard, so we don't have to vote on them anymore. I, I think, because this situation, this situation's from 2005. I've talked to the developer, you know, the way it came up, guys, is that Alliant was paying, they didn't realize they weren't billing somebody for the light, so the light got damaged. The developer repaired the pillar and the wiring, which he's still willing to do going forward, but Alliant would take care of it. Alliant's not going to fix the light because no one's paying the bill. And so I, I would sure like to see us put this issue to paper.
And I don't want to mix.
Two conversations to have, though.
Well, and I don't want to mix the issues, because these lights separately, in my eyes, don't make any, meet any of the standards because of the height requirement nor the light that they're outputting to meet anything that we'd want to accept, nor do I think we want to touch the pillars as far as an acceptance. Separately, other street lighting things, I do think there are things that we need to put into place.
Please.
Standards that say, this is what's expected. You will install this many lights. I know some subdivision standards talk about lumen levels, but you can make something comprehensive enough that talks about, you know, the number of lights you'll need in a certain block radius of what you'll have. So we can set those, however, in cases like this, I don't, I think this probably wouldn't have been avoided from those types of standards, other than we would, putting the direct language in the resolution that we are not accepting the entrance pillars. I think that that, moving forward, should we have those types of requests, are things that we should probably put into resolutions.
Well, and, so for me, there's two conversations to have. There's the conversation about who takes care of the structure itself, and then who's, who pays, and then the other conversation is who pays for the actual lighting portion of it. So for example, if, if these lights met the requirements that we would ask for, for lighting, and we're in a place where we need lighting, I would say, as a city, I'm okay paying for the lighting, but I don't want to pay for the structure, where in the future, we could have a conversation with developers and say, you're allowed to put things in, as long as, as a developer, you would have to have an HOA or covenants or something that's going to take care of the, the common maintenance of those pillars, and then we'll pay for the lighting as long as it meets the requirements that we have for lighting. That's where I think the conversation needs to kind of go, in my opinion. Again, I just don't want to discourage people from putting up decorative lighting, because I think it does enhance the beautification of a neighborhood.
And I hope that I didn't lead you to believe that it's the decorative aspect.
No.
These are strictly decorative, and I, and I think that a decorative light would be nice. I think it's us working with Alliant and getting something that meets both values, something that looks good, but also lights.
Yeah, I agree. And I went and I, I drove like I always do, I drove, and it is, does not illuminate much. It strictly is, is decorative, and it is possible that if, if an LED bulb was put in there, it might meet our new criteria, whatever it is, but it would be nice to have some standardization. So when these issues come up, we don't feel like we're like recreating the wheel again.
And I kind of feel that's, that's where the direction we're going down. It's no, no fault to yourself, it's just, I think, coming up, coming up with a set of standards. of standards.
The issues that you've seen have arisen over the last two or three decades.
Right, yeah.
Of, of changing standards.
Yep.
You know, and.
Please don't take that as, as direction to you, it's just, I would like to see us put this thing.
I completely agree with you.
You know, we have street standards, let's go with the light standard, and that way we can, we can adhere to it and say, this is what you can do.
We appear more uniform than.
Okay. Well, that's a, that is, you're right, Matt. That is a discussion for the other day, but you've, you've got where our interest is in, on that, Nick. Does anybody have any questions for Nick on this issue? Is there anybody online? So the issue is whether we want to approve the agreement. So if you don't want to approve, you're going to vote no, right? Can we get a vote, Kathleen?
Rinker.
No.
Phillips.
Aye.
Kreitzer.
No.
Graham Murray.
No.
Mopkin.
No.
Okay. That one has failed. Comments from the audience? There's no one on the line, so then we'll go to comments from staff. Eric? Nick?
I just, so downtown, I know I've had several calls. You may have noticed regional planning, or somebody was doing it for them, some counters that have been installed on some of the lamps. People were wondering what they were. They're essentially pedestrian counters. We have to get front-end information to some of the performance measures that we've chosen